I'm going to begin. Good evening. My name is Nina Rosamondo, and as president of the League of Women Voters South County, I would like to welcome you to this virtual forum for the school committee candidates. All seven candidates for the five open seats are here tonight participating. They are running for four-year terms and one unexpired two-year term. The candidates with the four highest vote totals will fill the four-year terms, and the candidate with the fifth highest total will serve the unexpected two-year term. They are here tonight to share their views and their positions on issues important to you, the voters of Westerly, concerning our schools and what's going to happen next. The views expressed tonight are those of the candidates, not of the League of Women Voters, and the sponsorship of this debate is not an endorsement of any candidate. The timers, they can wave to you, are League members Linda Bongiellati and Christine Martone. Candidates are given one minute for their opening and closing statements and their answers to questions. They will be given a warning at 30 seconds and another warning 15 seconds, and when their minute is up, they will be indicated with a stop. I would now like to welcome our moderator, Mr. John Bender. Mr. Bender is a reporter for the Publix Radio, which is Rhode Island's NPR member network. He began work at the station as a morning news producer in 2013 and then became the station's general assignment reporter in 2017. Since 2019, he has led the station's education coverage. So I'd like to welcome Mr. Bender.
Thank you very much, Nina, and good evening to everyone, candidates and everybody who is watching at home. As Nina mentioned, my name is John Bender, and before we begin the forum in earnest, would the candidates please raise their hand, state their name and candidate number, then I'll describe the format for this evening's forum.
One, Diane Carradillo Bowdy.
Number two, Christine Cook.
Number three, Mike Ober. Number four, Timothy Killam.
Number five, Rebecca Fowler.
Number six, Rob Salino.
Number seven, Giuseppe Gencarelli.
Excellent. And quickly, Rob, I will mention that your microphone is a little far and you're a little quiet. The order of the candidates' opening and closing statements and responding to questions has been determined by the drawing of names prior to this forum. Names were drawn from a hat to determine the order of response. Questions have been submitted by residents of Westerly and League members via email and an anonymous question form on Facebook and vetted by the Voter Services Committee of the League of Women Voters South County. No questions will be taken from the public tonight. There will be an opening statement and a closing statement of one minute each. Candidates will deliver their opening statements beginning with candidate one, and the closing statements will be in the reverse order. All candidates will be asked each question and will have one minute to answer. A candidate may choose to pass on answering any question. The first question will be addressed to candidate one and proceed to candidates two through seven. The second question will be addressed to candidate two and be followed by candidates three through seven, and then back to candidate one. It's made much more easy by the fact that there are only seven candidates here tonight. This will continue until all questions have been asked. And by the way, if candidates get off track or fail to answer the question, I'll gently remind candidates of the original question, giving them the opportunity to answer to the specific issue. And a note on the timing, we will not be muting people. This is a honor system, but I will, if you are going overboard, I will remind you that your time has ended and you'll be allowed to finish your thought, but then we will move on. Candidates, please mute your own mics until it's your turn to speak, then mute yourself when you've completed your answer. Now, let's begin with opening statements. Diane Carradillo Bowdy, please begin.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to everyone who made this event possible. My name is Diane Carradillo Bowdy, and I'm a candidate for the Westerly School Committee. My parents, brothers, children, and I all graduated from Westerly High School. I have a master's degree in management and have been employed at Electric Boat in Groton for 20 years. I devoted a great deal of time to serving our community's youth athletic programs before being elected to the school committee in 2012. The combination of my education, career experience, and dedication to Westerly's children has ensured a positive contribution over the past eight years. My most pressing objective is improvement of Westerly Public Schools facilities. This will encompass buildings, grounds, and fields, and will require strategic investment of operating capital and bond funds. In order to ensure success, we have to bring together not only the town council and school committee, but also all other community stakeholders with one objective: providing facilities that will foster student achievement for years to come while also being responsible custodians of our community's budgetary resources.
Thank you very much. Onto candidate Christine Cook.
Good evening. My name is Christine Cook, and I am seeking reelection to the Westerly School Committee. I've been serving my first term since 2016, and in early 2020 was elected unanimously by my fellow school committee members to serve as the committee's chair. I also serve as co-chair of the school building committee. I'm a proud graduate of Westerly High School. I have a son and two stepdaughters in the Westerly Middle School. For my day job, I am the marketing and communications coordinator for Westerly Hospital. I hold a bachelor's degree in English from Providence College and a master's in communications from Emerson College. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and it gives me and my fellow candidates an opportunity to show the voters where we stand on the important issues facing our students, parents, and districts, and educators. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Timothy Killam. Oh, sorry, Michael Ober.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum. I'm Michael Ober. I've lived in Westerly for 26 years. My children have gone through the Westerly School System. I was a member of the Westerly School Committee from 1998 to 2004 and in 2008. I also served on the School Committee's Policy Subcommittee, and I was vice chair of the Board of Finance. I also helped with bond referendum to build the middle school and renovate the Westerly High School. I have the experience in dealing with school budgets, school policy, and bond referendums. I can use this experience to help deal with issues facing our school and moving forward on investing in our building facilities. I'm asking for your vote Tuesday, November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Now to Timothy Killam.
Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I'm Timothy Killam. I'm 38 years old, and I have three children in the Westerly School Committee, our school department, I'm sorry, and I was appointed to the school committee in March of 2019 to fill a vacancy. In November of 2019, my colleagues elected me the vice chairman of the Westerly School Committee. Currently, I sit on the Building Subcommittee, and I am also a member of the Policy Facility Rental. I also was a member of the Interchange Team for the Director of the Pupillar Personnel Position. I'm always available to speak to members of the community and always welcome input. I run Dockside Electronics Company and Mystic, a marine electronics organization. I am seeking to another term on the Westerly School Committee to continue the progress with Westerly Public Schools.
Thank you very much. Rebecca Fowler.
I'm Rebecca Fowler. Well, you'll see me as Rebecca on the ballot, but I go by Becky Fowler, and I'm seeking a seat on the Westerly School Committee. I've been with my husband, Chief Petty Officer Daniel Fowler, for 15 years. He's been active duty in the Navy for 17 years, and his career brought us to Westerly six years ago. We've lived here since June of 2014. We have three children, two middle schoolers, Annabelle and Patrick, and Jack is our three-year-old. I currently work as the Director of Food Services for Stonington School District. So in this seat, I bring experience as an administrator from that side of things. I'm running for a seat because I'm determined to get the job done, as evidenced by my past and everything that I've accomplished during my husband's career, and I'm looking forward to tonight.
Thank you. Robert Salino?
Thanks, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for the invite. I appreciate it. My name is Robert Salino, and I am running for school committee. I am a lifelong resident of Westerly. I live in town with my wife and three children, who all have attended or do attend still Wesley Public Schools. I've been in education for over 20 years. I hold a master's degree in elementary education and a sixth year in administration from Sacred Heart University. Currently, I work as an instructional specialist in mathematics in the Waterford School District at the middle school level. I've worked as a classroom teacher for 13 years, and I have worked at both the elementary and the middle school level. I'm running because I believe I can make a contribution to the Westerly School System. I have in-depth knowledge of how children learn, and I'm current on best practices for teaching and learning. I'm well-versed in curriculum and as well as interpreting data. I truly believe my skill set will make me an asset in assisting the town of Westerly ensure that our children have the best education. They deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Giuseppe Gencarelli.
Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Giuseppe Gencarelli, and I am running for Westerly School Committee. I'm a lifelong Westerly resident and a graduate of Westerly High School. My wife Paula is also a graduate of Westerly High. My son Joseph will be a graduate this year. He's a senior now, and my daughter Julie is in 10th grade. I have a bachelor's degree in psychology, a master's degree in elementary education, and a sixth-year degree in administration. I have been in education for a total of 21 years. I started my career as a classroom teacher in Waterford, Connecticut. I became principal of Hope Valley Elementary School in the Charahood District in 2011. As someone who only knows education, I would bring a wealth of knowledge and firsthand experience as a member of the Westerly School Committee. I want to advocate and help make a difference for our school community. Most importantly, I think it's time for us to have a comprehensive plan for the future of our school building. That's one of my main reasons for running. We want 21st century learners, and I believe we need facilities to make that happen.
Thank you all very much. And now we will enter the question portion of this forum. Questions that have a one-minute limit for the answer. That's a reminder that you have one minute to answer these questions. There may be second parts or follow-up questions, but a reminder as well that as we go through, it will begin with candidate number one and move through, and then the second question will begin with candidate number two, ending with candidate number one. So the very first question. The voters of Westerly have rejected two school-building proposals over the past four years. What would you propose for upgrading Westerly's schools? And we'll begin with you, Carradillo Bowdy.
Thank you for that question. So we in Westerly have been at this project for over six years, trying to figure out how we're going to improve our facilities. In 2016, there was a bond referendum that proposed renovations to three elementary schools. At that time, we had enough capacity to be able to move our students from building to building while buildings were under construction. That was the beauty of the plan. No kids would be in the schools under construction. Then in 2019, a plan came forth for $74 million that included a new build on the State Street facility. That also failed barely. So what we need to do now is get everyone together on the town side, the school side, all the residents, to understand we need to do something moving forward, and the only way to make that happen is to all be on the same team.
To follow up, do you support a new building?
Well, I would support a new build if we were able to do that and simultaneously make the upgrades to all the other buildings that have been stated in the past years.
Thank you.
So we had a, the dollar sign was the problem last time, but that's how I feel. I think all our buildings are in need.
Thank you, candidate Carradillo Bowdy. We'll now move to candidate Cook. Same question.
Thank you. And I agree with Ms. Bowdy that one of the biggest issues for the last bond, I was the co-chair of that building committee along with Ms. Fuller, and I do think that the price tag was just simply not, it was unpalatable for the community. However, we were hoping to get a 50% reimbursement, and we were really going for the prize there. Unfortunately, the voters thought it was just too much money. So I would support this similar plan because I still believe in the educational plan that we put forth, because I don't believe we build buildings and then stuff kids into them. I think you need to look at the plan. What are the grade configurations? What makes most sense educationally? In terms of groupings, we had a pre-K to two-model, three to five, and then we were looking to have the middle school be six to eight. So I think we should still consider pursuing the educational plan and then figure out what the facilities look like around that. But this committee would certainly have to have a lot of discussions about whether they agree with me on that. So that would be my thought.
Thank you. And to clarify, do you support a new building?
Absolutely. I don't know that, I don't really know how we can do much more than with the State Street School in the condition it's in. I'd have a hard time understanding how we wouldn't have a new build, but maybe someone can convince.
Thank you. Same question for candidate Ober.
Well, I think we need to develop a plan that everyone can agree on. I think one of the problems with the last referendums is that there were groups who ended up opposing it because they thought a different plan was better. In the past, we've worked together, we've come behind a plan, and also I think we need to communicate better with the town council. I think there were questions of reimbursement that dogged both projects, and I think when we do it, we should have one single voice saying and answering these questions. I think it's up to the school committee and the town council to work closer together. I think it's, we need to put together a, not only a building committee, but when we decide on the project, to put together a sort of a campaign committee to not only sell the bit, but educate people, saying, this is why we need it, this is why it costs so much, and this is how it will benefit us. And I think we have to keep going over that message again and again and again until we can pass that referendum. But I think working together is the most important thing.
And do you specifically support a new building?
I don't support any plan in particular right now. I think I voted for both plans. I thought both plans had good and bad about them. I think we need to figure out what we need to do and go forward and what we can get behind.
Thank you.
I think it's been complicated with the COVID-19, where it's kind of put a monkey wrench into the process of developing those plans.
Thank you very much. Onto you, Timothy Killam.
I think we do need to unify as an entire community. Unfortunately, it's the last referendum, it was town versus school, and it can't be that way. We're one community. We need to come together and build this together. I mean, if you've been in any of the buildings, you will see, I mean, they need help. I've had students in all but one building in this town, and I currently have students in multiple buildings now, and I can tell you, it's just, we have to come together somehow to make this work. I think both plans were both viable, and a new build was necessary if we are going to stick with State Street. Yes, I believe that because that building is just deplorable in my mind. But we have to bring multiple projects together. I think bringing the field projects together, the school projects together, all as one to build this community together as one unified team is what has to happen. Otherwise, we're never going to move forward.
And to follow up, you do support a new building. Is that?
I would support a new building, yes.
Candidate Fowler, same question.
Sorry, I'm going to learn how to work this thing. I will start right off the bat and say that I was a State Street parent. My daughter did first through fourth grade there. My son did kindergarten through fourth grade there. I absolutely believe in a new build at State Street and with upgrades that need to be made at Dunn's Corner and Spring Brook. And I think with this last referendum, part of the problem was all of the other extras that wanted to be done with the upgrades to the other buildings. And I know we've only been here for six years, but I've heard of the 2020 vision and how the, you know, the high school had their day to get a new school, the middle school had their day to get a new school, and now it's time to focus on the elementary schools. And we have to work together, and we can't have a split committee. We have to be on a unified front with whatever the plan is, and then, as others have said, we also need to collaborate with the town council. It can't be us against them.
Thank you. Same question for you, candidate Salino.
Thank you. Yeah, our facilities is definitely not a surprise to anybody that this is going to be one of the main issues for this election. I'll echo what everybody else has said here. We do need to garner support through the community. We need to stand as one in order to make something happen. If anybody has spent any time in some of these buildings, you realize that just failing to act is not a choice. We have to understand that. We need to educate our children for 21st century, and we need to be able to give them those 21st century skills. In order to do that, we need the infrastructure in order to make that happen. The way that our buildings stand now, they cannot handle that type of infrastructure. They need to be upgraded, they need to be, a new build, whatever the plan is, it needs to happen. We know that once, when we invest in education, it's a payoff for everybody, and when our students win, we're going to win as a community as well.
Excellent. And to clarify, do you specifically support a new building?
I do. With what they're able to do now with green building, there's a lot of money that can be saved in terms of other expenses such as heating, electricity, things like that. There's ways to save money while doing a new build as well, so I do.
Thank you very much. Same question for you, candidate Gencarelli.
Thank you. This is the main reason why I'm running for school committee is, you know, just like my partner there, Rob, said, we want 21st century learners, and we need, like I was saying in my opening statement, we need those facilities to make this happen. We are in a digital revolution, people, you know, so we need that infrastructure to make this a reality. You know, we need state-of-the-art buildings. So, you know, yes, I'm a proponent of new building, for a new building, especially for State Street. We need to invest in our future, our kids. You know, as an educator, I always talk about being a role model. Well, it's time for us as adults to become those role models for our children. We need to invest in their future because they're going to be running our world very shortly. So, you know, how do we do it? It all starts about building relationships, communicating ideas, and being transparent. We need to be transparent. It's number one. You know, we must work as a team because we should all have the same vision, you know, about the future of our children.
Thank you all. Second question. Two school bond referendums on school-building projects were defeated. If elected, what would you do to build consensus within the school committee and then bridge cooperation and communication between the school committee and the town council for school projects? And we'll begin with you, candidate Christine Cook.
So we're already starting that. I'm actually a member of the new building committee. I'm not the co-chair. I am simply a member of the school committee, representing the school committee. Justin Hopkins, who's on the planning board, is the chair. But we've already begun that process, and we've learned a lot of hard lessons from the last two failures. And if you don't learn from your mistakes, then you're just going to repeat them again. So the tack we're taking now is, we had some community members who submitted plans before COVID. We were actually excited Friday the 13th, the day that everything hit, the you-know-what. We had to, we were having a presentation with members of the community to present their plans. And so I think we need to hear from everyone on what their opinions are and get a sense of what do people want and why do they want it before we start the process again. So that is, I think, one way is to get everyone's input, buy-in, let them have a seat at the table. And on town council, we've got our work to do. I think a couple of people have said that. There's some bridges that have to be built there because I think they want to give us a number and back us in. So more to come on that.
Thank you. We will now move on. Same question for Michael Ober.
Thank you. Yes, what I would do is I would reach out to different sections of the community. We would, of course, talk to our families at schools. We would talk to the business community. We do constant outreach to senior centers and just make it a constant contact educational process, bringing them on board, not only just taking their ideas, but offering positions to help guide us through it. I mean, the town council, we, again, have to talk to them, keep the communications going, listen to what they're saying, and they're going to be looking at the money. And we have to come with a strong plan that shows exactly how much it's going to cost, not what it may cost, or how much reimbursement we get. We have to sell the plan and then sell the cost, and they'll listen to that. They've listened to that in the past, but you can't just go there and ask them for the money, and it will be a good thing. They have to be educated, they have to be talked to, and they have to be heard. So that's what I would say we would do.
Thank you. Same question for candidate Killam.
I think, you know, at first, to work with the town council, I think we need to look to them for a number that they're comfortable with and start there, and then work around that. I think, you know, the building committee could look to adding specialists in different areas, having, you know, an electrician involved, HVAC, parents, bringing, you know, different members of the community really together that can build on the team, you know. We need to have a certain amount of educators, principals, you know, and members of the town council all working together. If we could bring, you know, that team as one, I really think that we could build a better consensus among the entire community as far as what we need and what we can do with the dollar amount we have. But I really think knowing really a budget to start with would make a big difference in how we build the entire project together.
Thank you. Moving on, same question for Rebecca Fowler.
So I don't know how much more I can add than what the others have said because they've said great things. You know, it's regular meetings with the town council, talking to them about what they think is feasible for us to do, you know, information gathering, emails, surveys, mailers, and I know that the building committee has done a lot of those things. I also was excited to hear about some of the other plans that had been submitted by different community members, and when the community feels more involved, I think they're more willing to support us in what we're looking for with a bond referendum and, you know, just inviting them to be involved. Thanks.
Excellent. We'll now move on to candidate Salino. Same question.
Thank you. I think what we need to do is we need to really investigate and hear what some of the possible solutions are. So let's get input from the community. Let's get input from other experts in the field to see what possible solutions can be out there. I think we need to look at, to see what funding is available at a state and at a federal level in order to help us do this. We need to do some more research on that. I think we need to get the community updated onto the actual state of our buildings. I think a lot of people in the community don't go into the schools, and they don't know what they look like, and they don't know what it's like for our students learning every day. And I think we need to somehow get them in there virtually or whatever it may be, but they need to see what's going on in the classrooms. And I think that we need to get the community updated on the great things that our schools are doing. We need the schools to be able to show what are the benefits when the students have, you know, top-notch resources in order to do the learning. Let's get the community involved and see what all the good things are that the school is turning out on a daily basis and how much more they can actually do. Thank you.
Excellent. Candidate Gencarelli, same question.
Thank you. So in real estate, it's always a location, location, location. And in our world right now, as a school committee member, it's all about relationships, relationships, relationships. We need to build that relationship with the town council and with the community. We all have a voice. We may need to develop norms so that we're following proper protocol when we're meeting, but it's important that we all talk to all the stakeholders involved. We may need to survey to see what the community thinks, take their input into consideration. I mean, the state is offering an amazing initiative right now where it's the newer and fewer initiative, where you can get up to almost 85 cents to the dollar. So it's foolish not to even consider looking into building, building new schools and discussing that with the town council. So we need to build the community in harmony, and I like Rob's idea about the virtual field trips to the schools.
Excellent. Thank you. Now moving on to candidate Carradillo Bowdy.
Thank you. So as Ms. Cook mentioned, the Building Subcommittee has already started looking at options that were put on hold on March 13th. It's been really poor timing, and that has hurt everybody, thrown a monkey wrench into the whole process, but I'm anxious to get going and have been calling into all the Subcommittee meetings, so I stay abreast of what's going on. I think as far as working with the town council, we need to have better, regular communication and not send something to them every two or three weeks that says here that this is where we are. I think we got to work hand in hand the whole way. And I liked what Mr. Salino said about better communication with the community about what the schools are really doing. I know most, many people don't have any idea how great our schools are, how many wonderful things are happening on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you all. Moving on to question three. Reduced funding for the state of, I'm sorry, reduced funding from the state for schools reduced funding from the state for schools and municipalities is likely. What items in the 2021-2022 school budget are you willing to cut? And what will you fight to protect? We will begin with candidate Michael Ober.
Thank you. I don't think we should look at it in terms of different things. Every program run by the school benefits certain groups, and you don't want to hit one group part of the other. So I would go for a more broader approach where we look at, but I'll take a little bit from everybody. I'd also probably go back and try to see if we can get concessions during the next contract about whether it's pay or benefits. But I don't think we should look at particular groups and hit them harder than another. Everything we do in the Wesley School benefits people. It's better to take a little than take a lot from some. I think we need to also advocate at the state level for more spending. I understand they're having a difficult time, but they can't just turn to the towns and say, we're going to just cut your budget, you figure it out. They've done that before, they did that in 2008.
Thank you. Candidate Killam.
It really is kind of a scary thought to think of, you know, having more cuts. You know, we were level funded on the school committee this year, so we did have to make some pretty significant cuts. I agree, you know, it's going to have to be something taken from everybody. But, you know, growing some of the other programs we have with CTE and bringing more students into the district can help raise some of the funding. You know, we've got to stop losing students to other districts. We've got to find a way to build, you know, Wesley Public Schools in the mind and image of the residents of Wesley because we really do have some amazing programs. You know, I think I agree with Mr. Ober, we need to push the state that, you know, we can't just keep cutting. But, you know, bringing more services in, maybe, you know, we start, you know, food services within the district and things like that, and growing our own foods. All of that is, you know, ways to just build our community, but also save some money.
Thank you. Same question for Rebecca Fowler.
Well, I am an independent worker in a food service, so of course I agree with that one. But, you know, like they've both said, we have to look at the budget as a whole. I have children in sports, I have children in the arts, and we love both of those things, but I also work in a school. I know how important positions like paraprofessionals are, and those are typically the positions that get cut first. And that affects the educational experience of a lot of students. So pushing for more funding, I think, is great, and more services. Of course, I'll go with the food service part of it as well. But I just would have to look at everything and see what's important to this district as a whole before I could pick out anything individually right now.
Thank you. Candidate Salino, same question.
Yeah, so I agree, you know, we need to try to find some more funding from the state if this is what's going to happen. Because with a cut, nobody wins, and we all know that. As soon as we decide that we're going to cut something, we're going to have losers on the table. And how do we decide who's going to lose? You know, like candidate Fowler mentioned about paraprofessionals, they're an easy one to say, oh, let's cut them. But the benefit that they provide their students in the classroom is immeasurable. So when you ask what would I want to protect? I would want to protect any service that enhances the educational or overall well-being of our students. So when you think about that, then really, what is on the table to cut? And it's not a lot. You know, people like to say, well, can we cut sports funding? Sports are so important to students who don't excel in the classroom. Some of those excel on the, you know, on the field. So we don't want to hurt those students either. We have to understand, we're educating the whole child. And it's not easy to say to take one part away from that child, and we can still educate them to the best of our ability or to the best of what they actually deserve. So I think we need to try to fight for more funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Jen Corelli.
Thank you. So, you know, when you think about things to cut, I would, I would, I'm a data guy. So I would like to, you know, when you're thinking about instructional programs, I always felt like Wesley had too many instructional programs and whether they were effective. So I'd like to look at the data regarding the instructional programs to see, are we making improvements? Is there student achieving, is there growth in student achievement because of these programs? So that's one thing that I'd like to look at. But the programs that we can lose, and Mr. Killam mentioned it, but it's a CTE program. We are losing thousands of dollars per child that goes to another regional school district. And, you know, I work in Charahoe, but Wesley's my town, you know? But we need to get that money back in our budget. We can't be losing students to other districts. So we need to make sure that we keep that CTE program going. Staffing is very important. I would fight for keeping all staffing. You know, expert instruction is what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Cara Diobaldi.
Thank you. So to this topic, last year, we had a group called Futures, and they came in and audited our special education department, if you will. And they looked at everything top to bottom. And what they ended up telling us was that we were heavy on the bottom and not heavy enough on the top. In other words, we had plenty of paraprofessionals, but not enough high-level support. So we did make some changes in doing that, but we kept the budget the same. So that was a winner. This year, we also unfortunately had to turn over Tower Street School Community Center to the town, and that was a big problem for me because I really valued the programs that happened there. And I would never want to cut anything having to do with social emotional learning because that's critical right now. And we were able to save the core programs for Tower, so I'm very proud of that. Thank you.
Same question for candidate Cook.
So I agree with my colleagues that ideally you'd want our state reps and senators to fight for more state funding. But from what I'm hearing, the reality is in the global pandemic environment this year, we should not expect that. So we should start to plan for less funding, not more. And if we get more, that seems better. The three terms, or the three years I've been here, we level funded the first year. Then we got a pretty sizable increase from the town council the second year, although you always ask for more and get less. And then last year, to Miss Killam's point, we got level funded again. And to Ms. Baudy's point, the way that we close some of those gaps is to get rid of a building that we happen to have. Well, we don't have any more extra buildings. We got rid of Bradford, we got rid of Tower. Now it's starting to get, it's going to get, we're going to have to start getting a lot more creative on the school committee. And I agree with Mr. Salino. I will not advocate or support anything that directly affects students in a negative way. If it affects adults, I can maybe support that because, to me, we're not a jobs program. We're not here to provide jobs, salaries, and benefits. We're here to support our kids. So that's how I feel.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the fourth question. The school's athletic fields are in poor condition, especially Ageri Field at the high school. What do you favor, continued maintenance, or replacement with artificial turf? Please explain the rationale for your plan, and we'll begin with candidate Timothy Killam.
Ageri Field is in very poor condition. It's just like our buildings. I think we have to do something. So I would support a turf field at Ageri Field. I believe that, you know, we are behind all our neighboring districts, and it needs to be done. But I think it needs to be done in a manner where we're working together with the buildings. It needs to be one project. You know, we can bring other districts in, have other events if we have a field that, you know, is respectable and usable by other communities. I mean, right now, we don't. So it's gone on too long. This has gone out to the voters before. I really think we need to come together again as a team and show the folks of Wesley, this is what we need, but we've got to do it all together as a family. You know, we can't say this one gets this and this one doesn't. You know, it has to be done.
Candidate Fowler, same question.
Yes, I definitely support getting artificial turf. Like Mr. Killam said, visiting neighboring districts and seeing what they have compared to ours, and then talking with parents and knowing that their teenagers have, you know, torn ACLs. And, I mean, I know that sports injuries are going to happen, but because they stepped in a divot on our field during a lacrosse game and messed their knee up or their ankle, and they now have lifelong issues. So absolutely, I would support an artificial turf field. Thank you.
Same question for candidate Salino.
Thank you. We know that that field, especially Ageri Field, is unsafe. Anybody who's spent any amount of time of it knows, you know, the holes and the unevenness of the terrain leads itself to injuries for our students. I think, you know, a field at the high school, it's a sense of pride for the community, definitely. It's something that we would all benefit from. I think the amount of play that those fields receive from the different sports that take place on them throughout the year really wouldn't allow for maintenance of that field to actually work. I think a turf field would be the solution that we would really need to go with. I would say, though, that I am still a facilities-first person. And if I had to put one against the other, I'm going to go for the facilities before I'm going to go for the field. Thank you.
Same question for candidate Jen Corelli.
Yeah, our athletic fields are, not like I've ever played football or soccer, and I've never been on the field, but I know, especially after a game, the field is torn up. We do need a new field, for sure. And, you know, I don't, I mean, I just think it's important to have the field for our students. It's like somebody said, pride. It's the pride for our town. And I think Mr. Killam said to bring other towns into our facilities. So I think for sure, we need a new field.
Thank you. Same question for you, candidate Cara Diobaldi.
I've been waiting for this one. So anyone who knows me knows that this has been something I've been working on with a lot of other people for six years. We had a referendum fail miserably years ago because it was brought out at the time when there had just been an announcement about particulars of chances of contracting cancer from those, from the undergrowth of the turf itself. But that has never been proven one way or the other. Bottom line, that field is an embarrassment. Our kids deserve better. We've had to take playoff games to other fields. That should never happen in a town like Wesley. We should never be in a position where we have to put our kids out there in something they cannot be proud of. So I would definitely support a turf field. And the other thing on that is you can't maintain a grass field if you're using it constantly. We don't have enough fields.
Thank you. Same question for candidate Cook.
I voted yes on the first athletic field referendum, and I would support artificial turf. And I also am a believer, as our superintendent is, that someone has mentioned the term whole child. Education is great, but sometimes kids need a hook. For my kid, it's football. I mean, he's not the best student in the world, he's a good student, but man, that football has caught fire in his belly. So to me, it's an important thing that we have both. And unfortunately, for too long, I think Ms. Baudy can agree with me, we've been pitting the athletic community against the facility community. We need to come together, which is why the athletic fields are being wrapped into our building project. So maybe we can get some reimbursement for ride. And maybe we can all work together instead of against each other and get everything done at once. But I'm also with Mr. Salino. If it's down to one or the other, we've got to get our facilities up to par. We have to, as we've seen with the coronavirus and HVAC and, you know, air quality issues. We need to address those. But I hope we can do it all. Maybe we can even do it in four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question for you, candidate Ober.
Yes, thank you. I would support a turf field. I've been involved with this in one way or another for the last 20 or more years. My kids have played on these fields, I know what they're like. I think it's very important that we get them done. But we're also facing our school building costs, so we have to make a balance. Now, what I would suggest in going forward is not necessarily doing a bond or something like that. I think going to the community and raising funds for that. It's a lot harder, it takes more time, but I think that would be the best way of going about doing it. We do need those fields upgraded and taken care of. We do the best we can right now, but they're constantly used. And you can't keep a field up like that and control all your costs. So I would, I support it. I support going out and trying to raise those funds from within the community and search for state grants, federal grants, to see what we can do. But that's what I would do.
Thank you. Question five. Enrollment in Wesley schools has declined, but Wesley's cost per pupil continues to increase. Now, this is a two-part question, and I will redirect if you don't answer both questions. What is your explanation for the high cost per pupil? And what specific measures need to be taken to reduce those costs? And we'll begin with you, candidate Fowler. We'll begin with candidate Fowler.
Sorry, I'm trying to process the question.
Would you like me to repeat it?
That would be great. Thank you.
Enrollment in Wesley schools has declined, but Wesley's cost per pupil continues to increase. This is a two-part question. What is your explanation for the high cost per pupil? And what specific measures need to be taken to reduce those costs?
Okay, so I know there's a lot to look at when you talk about things like this, but I would want to look at the data and see how many students were busing out of our district because I know that that can increase our costs. And, I mean, it affects both of them. If the enrollment is down because we have kids who don't want to go to school here or who need to go to school in other districts because we can't provide them with the educational experience that we need, that's a cost to the district. So that's one of the things I would want to look at, is how do we retain these students? Thank you.
And the second part of that question, specific measures needed to reduce those costs?
Oh, man, I thought I had it. I think if you retain the students, that's going to help. You know, we're not paying to transport them to other districts. And that's just all I can think of off the top of my head right now. You know, retaining our students, I think, is just important for cost and enrollment.
Thank you. Same question for you, candidate Salino.
So, you know, our expenses, everything is getting more expensive nowadays. So it only makes sense that the per pupil cost is going to go up. The diesel for the buses goes up, the heating oil, you know, everything that we're paying for, food, everything is getting more expensive. So I'm not surprised that the per pupil cost continues to rise. We're living in a world, especially now when we're talking about, you know, having a one-to-one school district and all the technology that we need, that adds an expense to the school as well. But I think it's a worthwhile expense. I think it's something that we need, and it's definitely something that benefits the students. I agree with what candidate Fowler said, and if we want to look at a way to try to lower that per pupil cost, we need to keep our students here in Wesley. And what does that mean? Does that mean we need, like our CTE program, we need to keep enhancing programs like that? And perhaps also with a new facility, we might be able to save costs down the road in terms of energy efficiency as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Same questions, candidate Jen Corelli.
Thank you. You know what? Not being on the school committee now, I'd really need to delve deep into the budgets and look at the line items and just identify areas where we feel like we could reduce the cost per pupil. The cost per pupil is high in Wesley. When I compared it with Charahoe, it's much higher. So we really need to look at, and I think Rebecca Fowler just said, look at the data for bus transportation. I think that's very, very important. We're, I said earlier, we're spending thousands of dollars transporting and having students attend other regional school districts that have CTE programs. So that's important, and that would be a way to reduce it. But I said it early as well, data for the instructional programs is important. I think we really need to look at them because it's one thing that I've noticed since my children have started, since kindergarten in Wesley, is they're constantly talking about programs, on programs. And I do need to see the results for me to support all those various programs that we have.
Thank you. Same question for you, candidate Cara Diobaldi.
Thank you. So, yes, it is true. So our out-of-district tuition cost and the out-of-district transportation is a lot of money. And we have done a lot of work over the last few years, especially since Principal Hoben came to Wesley and to expand CTE programs. But you have to be careful. We have to make sure that the offerings are going to be well-attended by the students before we invest resources in that. So it's kind of a shell game. The other thing that I think needs to be considered is in Wesley Public Schools, we do a lot more. Our staff, our administration, they do a lot more than just educate students. We don't have a social services agency here in Wesley. So many, many things that should be happening either within the town's social services agency or an independent agency or an independent one, that stuff is falling to the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Same questions, candidate Cook.
Thank you. I know our superintendent, the first thing he asked us when we interviewed him is why such a high per pupil cost, and we had a hard time really, really answering the question, quite honestly, and he said, you know, the results should reflect that. So, you know, most people will say, I'll pay as much as you want me to pay, as long as I'm getting that bang for the buck. So are we, you know, we probably have work to do there. You know, just to be quite honest, I mean, Ms. Boudy mentioned the futures, the futures report. I mean, we did find that we were paying a lot for special education. How can we kind of not reduce services, but how can we be smarter about how we deliver those services? Also, salary and benefits, it's our biggest cost, it's 87% of our budget. So is there a way that we can have our veteran teachers maybe retire early, bring some younger ones in, they're always less expensive, they don't have the same level of experience, but it's something we've been looking to do. So we're trying to address it, but it's going to take a long time. It took a long time to get here in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. Same questions for candidate Ober.
Thank you. Yeah, the per pupil costs, you know, aren't affected necessarily by the size of how many kids are there, it's what the costs are from the beginning. It's pension costs, it's salary, it's building. These things don't change regardless of your school population. I mean, they closed Taras Street in Bradford to try to adjust that, but still, the costs are there. Now, you can look at your, look at your budgets and see, is that money being spent properly? Is there better ways of doing things cheaper and look like that? But we can't get too focused on the per pupil expenditures, we're looking for the quality of the education. If it's there, maybe that amount is reasonable. If it's not, we have to ask, why isn't it? And then come up with plans to deal with it. So per pupil expenditures is an important aspect, but we have to look underneath, what are we providing? Is it good? Is it, is it making our school system move forward? And if it is, then maybe we need to keep that in place. If it's not, we need to make reductions.
Thank you. Same questions for candidate Killam.
You know, our cost per pupil, per pupil is high. I mean, the futures report's been mentioned multiple times. I mean, we have a huge special education program in this town, we have a fantastic program in this town, and, you know, it comes at a cost. I do think things like looking at classroom sizes is a big deal. We might have to look at, you know, if we've got a program that only has five or eight students, we might have to look at, you know, removing that program. You know, we've got to look at the core classes, but again, growing the arts program, the CTE program, theater, to bring these out-of-district students back would be huge. I'm also a big proponent of going green, and I think that we need to spend some time looking at, you know, efforts to go solar in the, within the district and different ways to just reduce our energy costs. I mean, these buildings are aging, but there's still things you can do to save money all the way around.
Thank you. Question six. What measures have the Westerly schools put in place for in-person learning to keep teachers and children safe? And what additional measures do you think would add to the effort? This is a two-part question, please answer both parts, and we'll begin with candidate Salino.
Thank you. So the measures that I'm aware of that have been put into place for, to, in order to keep the in-person learning going, which I, let me just say that how essential I think that that is. Being an educator, education is all about making relationships with students, and it's very difficult to do that via Zoom chat. So I think it's great that we have our kids back in schools, but I like the idea that they've done so far of cohorting the kids, so we have different cohorts of students so that we try to intermingle less, as little bit as possible, that we have just half the students attending in the building for part of the week, and then the other half for the other part of week. So it limits the number of students there, so the contact tracing and anything else would be simpler, but there's just also, it's easier to social distance. I think one thing that they could look at to help make, make it safer would be having specials like PE and art run for an extended period of time. So like, Mr. Jen Corelli's class is going to have art for these four weeks, so that way the art teacher isn't, of course, contaminating different cohorts of classrooms or students. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question for candidate Jen Corelli.
Hey, Mr. Bendig, you mind just repeating that question?
Certainly. What measures have the Westerly schools put in place for in-person learning to keep teachers and students safe? And what additional measures do you think would add to the effort?
Okay, thank you. So there's been, well, there's been a lot of things put in place for our schools, and when you look at the guidance principles and the reopening plan, you know, it talks about putting safety at the forefront of all decision-making. I think that's, that's been going, I think it's been going well overall. My students feel safe going, my children feel safe going to school. It's, they, they talk about being transparent, and I'm constantly getting lots of communication from the superintendent, from the principals, so that's been, that's been wonderful. You know, they talked about equity, we will be equitable, you know, and then we're going to hold high expectations for all. So I think a lot of things have been put in place for students for the in-person learning. Regarding safety, you know, I, I'm, I feel comfortable with what's in place right now, but safety is, is top priority. As a principal, that's my number one job, I always tell people that all the time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Same question for candidate Cara DiO Boudy.
From the beginning, we've been following the guidance provided by the governor, the Rhode Island Department of Education, and the Rhode Island Department of Health. And the Rhode Island Department of Health, obviously, they're the health expert, not, not the superintendent, the teachers, the parents, nobody. So we've been following that very closely, all the guidelines, all the protocols, and I think the best thing that we did was our superintendent really took a tact from day one, like, you know, we really want to get our kids back in front of the teachers, as candidate Salino said, that's where they do their best learning, that's best for everybody. And I think going forward, the best thing to remember is that we cannot get complacent, we have to stay vigilant, and we have to keep saying, you know, reminding everybody, wash your hands, keep your mask on, make sure you get your flu shots, things like that. So it's, it gets long, but difficult to listen to it every day, but it's necessary. Thank you.
Candidate Cook.
I think that what we've done is working. I mean, we are still plugging along, and some districts have closed shop, they've closed all their buildings, they've had to go back into full-distance learning. So I do think the protocols are working, and that's a tribute to the staff and how amazing they've been. One thing that I'm concerned about is not what happens in the schools, because I think we've got that down, it's what happens outside the schools. So my concern is some of these cases are happening in the community, in this community spread. So what can we do to make sure that parents are being vigilant, and grandparents and the community in terms of what these kids are doing on the weekends and after school, so that they're not bringing it into the school? And same with the staff as well. So is that more testing? Maybe. Maybe we need to do more testing, and maybe that will help really keep the numbers down, because we can't, we could get to a point, we don't have enough staff if we have staff getting sick, if kids are bringing it into the school. So right now, we're in a good place, and I hope we stay there, but I would say maybe more testing in the community.
Same question, candidate Ober.
Yes, I think the schools, the Western schools has done a good job in dealing with the issue. I think they're following the state rules, allow, and allowing kids to come back and go to school safely. They've reduced the amount of in-person contact, they, they're committed to cleaning the building and monitoring. I think the way we can increase this is by increasing monitoring people, more tests with, help with the state. I think using technologies such as air systems that filter the air quicker and purify it. I think we need to look at increasing maybe mask use, making it easier for people to use that, and I think those things would help increase it, and a way I can always use more state, and get more state assistance for these programs as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question for candidate Killam.
Yeah, full disclosure, when the school year opened, my three students were distance learning. My youngest son is in the at-risk category, and I will tell you that just with the measures in place that I've seen, he has returned to the building part-time, because Westerly has just done a fantastic job at keeping these students safe. The health screening communication is awesome. I know as a parent, every morning I get a text message about 5:00 AM saying, hey, make sure to fill out that health screen. And, you know, our superintendent has been phenomenal at communicating with all the parents. I think really, you know, again, echoing everybody else, it's more testing and really just making sure that the, the families know that the precautionary measures being taken place in school, they need to be taken outside of school too, because that's really where I believe the problem is happening and how it's growing. I think Westerly's just doing a great job with the way they're handling it.
Candidate Fowler, same question.
I agree with everyone else. I think the district has done a wonderful job keeping our kids safe in that regard. Their social distancing, they're in the cohorts, their masks, the lovely forms that I fill out incorrectly on occasion, and then the nurse has to call me. You know, so I think in that regard, they've done a great job. My kids ride the bus every day, it picks them up right in front of our house, which is wonderful. I've loved how the busing, the bus stops have changed. And for additional measures, I do think, you know, increasing the air quality, which can be tough in some of our buildings that are a little bit older. But my big concern when it comes to safety is also outside of the buildings, and it's more so the number of parents who are having to leave their children home alone all day when they shouldn't be, and they're having to distance learn at home by themselves when they're not of an age, because there's just a certain couple of grade levels that don't have care provided for them.
Thank you. Question seven. The Rhode Island Department of Education has civics guidelines for grades K through 12, but it does not mandate civics as a subject. Do you support a mandatory semester-long civics course that includes a civics engagement project as a high school graduation requirement? Please explain your position, and we'll begin with you, candidate Jen Corelli.
So, yes, I'm in full agreement with a civics, you know, engagement throughout as a senior project. I think that's vitally important for our children to grow and become, you know, those global citizens of our country. So, yes, I do support the civics engagement. Thank you.
And to clarify, would you also support a course in addition to a project?
Yeah, I do. I think that's important for, for them to learn and then apply, so, yes.
Thank you. Same question to you now, candidate Cara DiO Boudy.
Thank you. I definitely support a civics class. We've had, had that at Westerly High School for years and years. We've also had the senior project. I am fully in support of that, because it requires a paper, a project, interaction with others, and something to help your community. And I think all those things are essential to the whole child and to creating citizens that will do what we're doing when sitting, sitting up here in places like this. Years ago, I believe it was the class of 2016, that was the first class that had to, no, not 2016, 2008, the first class that had to do both PBGRs and, and the senior project. And to the delight of many students, years after that, the PBGRs were taken away, it was seen as repetitive, and, but I think the senior project should stay forever. Thank you.
And to clarify, you support making the civics program a mandatory?
Yes, I do support it, and we've had that class at Westerly High School for as long as I can remember.
Thank you. Candidate Cook, same question.
Yes, I support the, a program, a project, as well as a course, and I do see that as generations go on, the sense of civic duty and responsibility is starting to wane in this country. And I think it's time to get back to that, and get back to basics, to what it means to be a citizen, and that, you know, it's not for other people to solve the problems, and not for the government to solve all your problems, that you need to get involved, and you need to know your government, and you need to know that, you, how to contact your government, how to get things done. Perfect example was Monday night, the town council. I mean, we saw a lot of citizens engaging in their government, and I think these kids need to understand how that works. If their parents aren't teaching them, then they're going to have to learn it at school, and it's vital, more than ever now. You can't sit back, you gotta, you gotta get involved in this world of what we're dealing with in these crazy times. So full support.
Thank you. Same question, candidate Ober.
Yes, I would support a civics requirement. I think it's important. I've always thought it was important. Unfortunately, a lot of times, those are the type of programs that do get cut in budgetary crunches. So I think the Rhode Island Department of Education should make it a requirement to have, and for the schools to have those programs in place so students can use them. Mike, like I said, my kids have been through it, they've done the programs, they're better for it, even though they, at the time, may not have thought so, but I think it made them more aware of what their community is like and what their responsibilities are. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Killam.
Yes, I support the continuation of the civics course. You know, we're sitting on the school committee for this last year and a half, we've had a couple of times, you know, a student come forward and speak to us, and, you know, it's, we need to see more of that, and more students learning to get involved. So that's been really encouraging, I think, you know, just growing the program, and I do believe in keeping it mandatory.
And the, the projects, to clarify, you support as well, projects?
Absolutely, I support the projects.
Thank you. Candidate Fowler, same question. My apologies.
Sorry, not the first time I've been called Flower. You're okay. Yes, I do believe it should be a class as well as a project. Taking it from a personal note, I did not have to take a civics class when I was in high school, and now that I'm an adult and see the state of the world that we're in, I definitely wish that it had been required, especially the project, actually, because when you have a learning experience that is community-based and community-involved, you're going to have a better learning experience is really the only way I can think to say it, and, you know, you're going to remember that, and it keeps our kids engaged in their community, it teaches them about government, and will just really help them in the long run, so, thanks.
Candidate Salino.
Yeah, I am absolutely in support of both. I think, you know, just looking around the world, that's probably one of the things that's very absent right now, is, you know, that civics, that knowledge of it. I love that Wesley always did the senior project, I think that they were ahead of their time on that, and I know other districts now are just starting to follow suit, but I think that was always a great way to get the students involved in their community. There's no better way to prepare our kids for, to enter the world, to enter our community as contributing members, and not just members who are there, but members who actually are giving back. And a project is an application of real-life skills that they've hopefully learned throughout their years in Westerly, and to put it to use for everybody is definitely a positive for all. It's just one world that we all have to share, so it's great if the kids know and understand that it's time to give back as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now shift to the yes/no questions. I will read a question. If your answer as a candidate is yes, please raise your hand. I will state the names of the candidates who say yes. Then I will state the name of the candidates, the names of the candidates who say no. Is that clear? Okay. All right. Question one. Are you in favor of regionalization and/or consolidation of school districts to cut costs? Yes or no? Candidate Christine Cook is the only candidate in favor. Candidate Robert Salino, Timothy Killam, Rebecca Fowler, Michael Ober, Giuseppe Jen Corelli, Diane Caradine, Cara DiO Boudy are not in favor. Question two. If elected, will you vote yes on a resolution in support of the Safe Schools Act, which would allow only peace officers defined as active and retired police officers and school resource officers to carry guns in school? Yes or no? All candidates have voted, have said yes, that they would support a resolution in support of the Safe Schools Act. Question three. Do you think the Westerly Schools enforcement policies for bullying, bullying, including cyberbullying, are sufficient? Yes or no? No candidates feel that Westerly Schools enforcement of No candidates feel that Westerly schools enforcement of policies for bullying, including cyberbullying, are currently sufficient. Question number four. Do you support a bond issue on the school athletic fields in 2021? All candidates support a bond issue on the school athletic fields for year 2021. And finally, do you think the Westerly schools have sufficient support personnel for children with special needs? Yes or no? Okay. Candidates Cook, Salino, Jen Corelli feel the schools have sufficient support personnel for children with special needs. Candidates Ober, Fowler, Killam, and feel the schools do not have sufficient personnel, support personnel for children with special needs. Did I did I miss anyone there?
I had my hand raised.
Okay, did you put your hand down? I apologize. Michael Ober and candidate Garrett Caradio Baudy also believe the Westerly schools have sufficient support personnel for children with special needs. Excellent. That concludes this evening's forum. I would like to thank everyone for taking part.
They need to do their closing statements.
That's exactly correct. I apologize. Now we will do closing statements. I forgot all about that. And closing statements will begin in the reverse order of opening statements, starting with candidate Giuseppe Jen Corelli.
Thank you again, League of Women Voters, for allowing us to to attend this forum. But, you know, as you all heard tonight, we all care and value education. My goal is to help make Westerly a top district in Rhode Island. It comes down to two things. One, delivering expert instruction. Nothing will ever replace high-quality expert instruction. And you heard my my rampage about instructional programs. You know, nothing will replace the instruction by by our teachers. We need to cultivate a culture to inspire and motivate all stakeholders to maximize their full potential. And the second is analyzing data to create a plan for improvements. I want to be involved to analyze to analyze the district data and dig to identify root causes. The most important step is what we do with that data that makes the biggest impact. We need to recognize the issue and move forward. So I want to be where Barrington is. We want to be a top district in the state.
Closing argument, closing statement from Robert Salino.
Thank you. As I said in my intro, our children deserve nothing less than the best in education, and I truly believe that. Our students are our greatest asset, and when they're afforded the best in education, everybody's going to win. We need to be able to prepare our kids to be college and career-ready in a world that is vastly different from the one that we grew up in and one that is changing and growing more rapidly than ever. Being in education for a living, I'll be able to call upon the skills that I use daily to assist those in setting policy and budget for our schools, ensuring that student learning, well-being, and growth is accounted for in every decision that we make. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for inviting me, and I hope you'll consider supporting me. Thank you.
Candidate Fowler.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event for us tonight. So I talked a little bit earlier about the things that I've accomplished in the last 15 years of my life, being a faithful Navy wife and supporting my husband's career while I built my own career. In the five years I've been at my job, I have earned the title of the Rising Star Director of the Year within the state of Connecticut for 2020 because I know how to lead, but I know how to be a team player. I'm not afraid to, you know, jump in and help out wherever it needs to be helped. I believe in collaboration. As an administrator in a district, I work with people who are just as easygoing and flexible as me, but I also work with people who don't know what flexibility is. And, you know, knowing how to communicate with everyone in a different way in their language is what it comes down to. And I am flexible and easygoing, but I know how to get things done, and I'm not one to sit by and wait for them to happen. I'm going to make it happen.
Candidate Killam.
I've enjoyed learning everything about the candidates tonight. I'm excited and encouraged to see some new faces come forward and the willingness to serve, you know, the school committee of Westerly. It's great to see some current educators come forward. I think the diversity on the school committee is incredibly important. You know, having educators, having myself, I run a small business, so every penny counts. Having children in the school every day, you know, so I know the real life. It's just, it's it's important to have diversity, and it's just, it's exciting to see these new faces come forward. We need to grow Westerly. We need to grow for new buildings, fields. We need to just, you know, continue to improve. So thank you to the League of Women Voters for inviting us all here tonight, and I hope I will have your vote coming forward here. Thank you.
Candidate Ober. Oh, you're you're still muted.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for this forum. I've spent the last 20 years involved in our school system and local government. When I was a member of the Westerly School Committee, we were able to work together to reduce per pupil expenditures, exceed the expectations of No Child Left Behind, build and renovate our schools, and balance our budgets. We're able to achieve these things by working together on the school committee and with the town council. We can do this again. That is why I'm asking for your vote for me on November 3rd. Michael Ober. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Cook.
Thank you, and thank you for having us. I agree with Mr. Killam that I think that I would be honored to serve with anybody in this forum, and I was thrilled to see some new faces come out. It's a very intelligent, well-spoken, passionate faces. We have a lot of work to do, and we have to be able to work together. And one thing that you learn is that relationships first, and if the school committee can't work together, then we can't expect the town council to work with us. So it's critical that we all work as a team. And I do feel that one of the things I have accomplished on the school committee is to bring people together and to hopefully get everybody to work together and demonstrated some leadership on the school committee because you don't have time to have, you can you can disagree, but you got to do it agreeably. So that's what I think I bring to the school committee. I hope to do it again, and I do ask your vote on November 3rd.
Thank you. And finally, candidate Cara DiO Baudy.
Thank you, and thank you for having us here this evening. I mentioned that my top priority is uniting the community and its leaders to foster improvements in Wesley Public Schools buildings, grounds, and fields. In addition, over the last few years, we've seen that strategic investment in world languages, the arts, and career and technical education have all yielded positive outcomes for our students whose interests lie in those areas. My personal educational focus has always been on math and science, and I know there are many students who share that passion. I would like to see Wesley Public Schools make some significant gains in these areas, and we'll devote energy to that cause. The last four years have been rewarding in many ways, yet very challenging in others. I have to say it, losing two school committee members that were also dear friends of mine was extremely difficult, and I don't feel that we ever regained our footing as a committee. I'm running because there's so much yet to be accomplished. Please vote for me and my teammates, Rob Salino, Giuseppe Jen Corelli, and Mike Ober. We will ensure results for Wesley Public Schools. Thank you.
And thank you all. And with that, this concludes tonight's forum on the school committee candidates for the school committee of Westerly. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, I guess it's my turn to close. I'd like to thank the candidates, and it's very encouraging to see that they are all so motivated and seem to understand the need for consensus as the community moves forward, hopefully with the schools. I'd also like to thank our moderator, Mr. Bender, and all our viewers on Zoom. There are many people who have helped with production of this forum who also deserve thanks. The League of Women Voters, Rhode Island Education Fund for providing funding, the town of Westerly's town manager, Mr. Rooney, and especially Mr. Mark Tate for making this virtual program possible. Many thanks also to the members of the Voter Services Committee who worked many hours on planning this event, and to the Westerly citizens, many of whom submitted questions this year, and also many of whom submitted on the same issues. There will be a link to this forum, which hopefully you can see on the screen in front of you. This forum has been recorded, and as soon as I am able, the link to it will be posted on the League of Women Voters South County page, and a link will also be posted for people who don't have Facebook on the State League website. The link will be given to all the candidates, who will then be free to share it with friends, family, and followers. I can't help but end by saying that one of the most important duties we have as citizens is to learn about issues and candidates so we can make informed choices when we vote. Please vote. There are a number of ways this year that you can vote. I'll summarize them very quickly. You can vote early in person at the town hall beginning next week, October 14th through November 2nd. You can also vote in person November 3rd at your polling place. And the third way to vote is by mail. The deadline to apply for a mail ballot is October 13th, and the Secretary of State's office has begun mailing ballots, mailing ballots to registered voters. So don't worry if you haven't received one yet. Any questions about your ballot or any other question, the website that is listed on the screen right now is the one you should log on to where you can check all kinds of things. You can also track the status of your ballot. With that, I'd like to end this forum. Thank you for participating, and good evening.
Thank you.